And again, we're waiting on the red light. Now we're up. Okay. Good morning, everyone. Welcome to this June 15th Board of Supervisors meeting. We call it to order at this time. And Mr. Slay, would you mind doing the invocation for us?
Mr. President. Father, it's another wonderful occasion to come together to conduct the business of the county. I thank you, Lord, that we have the privilege to participate in our development. Father, thank you for these gentlemen who have sacrificed much to be able to serve our community. Pray that you would give them wisdom and discernment this morning. Lord, we thank you, and we do not take for granted the freedoms that have been purchased for our being able to come together today to conduct the business of the county. I pray, Father, for those first responders, our law enforcement personnel, our military personnel, and their families. I thank you for their service, Lord, and I ask that you protect them and bring them home safely in Christ's name.
Amen.
Amen. Okay. We want to change the process, the agenda, just a little bit. We have a matter we need to take up, and Mr. Slay will handle it from here.
Mr. President, with consent of the, with consent of the board, item J under Section 10, which is my, Section 9, which is my section of the agenda, which was a discussion of a potential agreement with a company for the collection of certain justice for outstanding fines and penalties, that matter is premature. The individuals associated with the entity under consideration ask that it be removed from the agenda, and so we're not going to take item J up today.
Okay. Do, uh...
Does it require action?
Require any action?
I would, I would ask for a motion to remove item J, Section 9, from the agenda.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion, Mr. Wilcox, second, Mr. Johnson, to move this item from the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Okay. All right. Now, we'll move back to the beginning, under Public Comments/Recognition.
Mr. President, the first item under Public Comments/Recognition is a special recognition of someone who is probably going to be surprised that, that he is being recognized today. In fact, it's not often that we have an individual who comes before us for recognition, and they actually set up and operate a camera and do so in a way that, that makes it appear as though that they are here to work. And so, Mr. Jim Duncan, if you'll come forward, stand here in front of everybody. I know this is probably...
Yeah, you make sure it's on.
This is probably something that you weren't prepared for.
No, no.
There were, there were a lot of folks who...
Well, I was asking about this robot, and nobody...
Well, we'll use just about anything to get a ruse over on somebody. This is Mr. Jim Duncan, and he is here today to be recognized by this Board of Supervisors and commended on his retirement as the WLBT cameraman for 50 years of service. So I'm going to read this resolution here that just lays out in very brief summary form some of the, some of the escapades and some of the abilities of Mr. Duncan and what he's done with his life, and it's noteworthy. Rankin County is proud and recognized Jim Duncan after 50 years of service. Okay. I'm used to that. I'll stand here closing up where I can speak into that.
Whereas Rankin County, Mississippi resident Jim Duncan began working for the owners of WLBT Television Station in 1965 while a student at Bellhaven College. And in 1966, he was drafted by the Navy for service in Vietnam, serving two tours of duty aboard the USS Ranger and the USS Enterprise. And while assigned to an aircraft squadron, Jim was tasked with installing cameras in aircraft and processing aerial film until his honorable discharge as a Petty Officer, Second Class in 1970. And whereas, following his military discharge, Jim returned to work for the owners of WLBT as a photographer, and in 1973 was promoted to Chief Photographer. During a distinguished career of nearly 50 years, Jim has been involved with virtually every noteworthy video achievement in central Mississippi, from weekly college athletic program, programming, to charitable fundraising programs, to his work with the Easter Seals Organization. And whereas, Jim Duncan has been inducted into the Mississippi Associated Press Hall of Fame and is the recipient of too many Associated Press and Mississippi Broadcasters Association Awards for filming and editing to name. And whereas, Jim Duncan may be best known as the husband of the late Vicki Roberts Duncan, the father of Lisa and Jennifer, and the grandfather of five wonderful grandchildren. To his coworkers, he is known simply as Chief. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors that special recognition and commendation is due WLBT photographer Jim Duncan on the occasion of his retirement. Special recognition is also made of his military service to his country, and we wish for Jim and his family many happy and relaxing days of retirement after a life of faithful service to our community. Thus resolved, this is the 15th day of June 2015. Mr. Duncan is signed by each of the supervisors and by our chance for clerk. Congratulations.
Why don't, why don't we have, why don't we have the time to come up and get a picture? Why don't we all come up? Let them, let them come up here and get a picture of us, get together.
Miss Bird? Miss Bird?
They want you.
Mr. Case?
Hey, Bird?
You want to take a picture?
Let me add that Jim worked with Bird Case for probably 40 years.
Forty years?
And so I think he deserves some special recognition. He made a deal with Mr. Case for 40 years. Congratulations.
It's a little different being in front of the camera.
Bird, yes, he was going to 16.
All right. Thank you guys so much.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Case.
Thank you.
President, we've got another commendation this morning.
Right.
On May...
Right.
This morning, we're also pleased to commend and recognize one of our law enforcement officers for extraordinary and exemplary actions in a life-threatening situation. I'd like for Officer Tyson Burleson to come forward, please. This is Officer Tyson Burleson. We're here today to recognize his courageous actions in a difficult situation. Whereas, Rankin County is abundantly blessed with law enforcement personnel who act quickly, professionally, and courageously whenever there is an emergency situation calling for action. Whereas, on May the 23rd, 2015, Rankin County Law Enforcement Officer Deputy Tyson Burleson responded to a motor vehicle crash where a motorist sustained life-threatening injuries resulting in the lost, loss of the motorist's leg. Whereas, Deputy Burleson immediately recognized the serious nature of the injury sustained by the motorist and responded quickly with first aid, applying a tourniquet and preventing blood loss. By acting quickly, professionally, and expertly, Deputy Burleson saved the motorist's life. Whereas, the quick thinking and actions to rescue the motorist is a testimony to the selflessness of Deputy Burleson and a further testimony to the exceptional training he has received in preparation for becoming a law enforcement officer. Deputy Burleson is an example of the quality of citizens serving our Rankin County community with skill and preparedness, and therefore is resolved by the Rankin County Board of Supervisors that Rankin County Law Enforcement Officer Tyson Burleson is deserving of high praise and special recognition from the citizens of Rankin County for his extraordinary actions on May the 23rd, 2015. That's resolved today, June 15th, signed by the supervisors and our chance for clerk. Sheriff, you got it?
Yeah, I was going to say, I know the board realizes the public did this. This is the third time in the rest of the year when these guys save child lives and they do warm my heart, that they, you know, they jump in action, they do what needs to be done under that stress like that. I'm just proud of everybody I have over at that sheriff's office. We're a lucky county that has the quality of employees we have over there, the dedication, the professionalism. I'm just proud of the sheriff's office. It's just a wonderful, wonderful department, the best one in the state of Mississippi.
Amen.
Jim, take care.
Okay. Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
Well, I guess you could say those are going to be pretty hard acts to follow from here on out. That's pretty big for, um, start the morning off with. But moving on, next we have old business to have a motion to approve.
We have one more. We got Doug Carter.
Oh, I'm sorry. See there, like I said, Doug is a hard act to follow. We got one more here, Doug Carter.
Doug's looking forward to this, too.
Yes.
Come on up, Doug. I apologize.
Doug's been looking forward to this for a while.
You're right. It's a hard act to follow. It sure is. But I'm real proud to introduce our new 4H agent or our extension agent in charge of 4H, Ms. Heather Jennings. Heather comes to us from Iowa State. Heather went to the University of Wisconsin, and she went to Mississippi State to graduate school. And somewhere along the way, she met a, a young man from McGee and, and married this young man, and they moved back to Iowa, and she taught at Iowa State. Now they're moving to Rankin County, and we're very proud to have her here.
Very honored, yes. Yes.
Good.
Look forward to it. I've spent a lot of years in 4H myself, so I know what it means to have good leadership for the young people. So I'm glad to have you.
Well, thank you so much, and I look forward to working with all the youth and all the volunteers and everything in Rankin County.
I know they're going to be excited, yes.
Welcome aboard. You're going to have to lose that accent.
It won't take you long to lose it, I can assure you.
Well, thank you so much.
Welcome aboard.
And I believe we have someone else here behind us we failed to recognize.
Yeah. Good morning. I'm Sherri Sareed.
Yes.
And I, I just want to thank you all again so much for your support throughout this process of hiring Heather. She, we had a tremendous number of qualified candidates for this position. It was a very hard process to select the, the right person, but we, we got an excellent person with Heather. The volunteers were involved throughout the interview process, and they all agreed she was fantastic. She's got a strong 4H background, grew up in 4H. She's taught animal science, and she's just so well-rounded, and we're really looking forward to having her on board, and thank you again, and we look forward to continued support from the county. Thank you.
I want to tell you one thing, you know, honestly, I've, I've thought about several times, some of the more influential people in my life were honestly my 4H agents and leaders. I could name them off, but they probably wouldn't want me to because they, they would date them. But, no, really, when I think back growing up, they were probably some of the strongest influences on my life as far as where, where I probably am today. So, anyway, we, it just carried that on, and we appreciate y'all and everything the 4H does. A lot of people don't realize just how far it reaches out in our community to, to the overall community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate y'all.
Thank you. Okay. I guess now I get back on order, on track here. Old business, I believe, to have, had a motion to approve the minutes. I believe Mr. Johnson made the motion, and Mr. Wilcox seconded.
Yes.
Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right. Consent agenda?
Most approved.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion?
Uh, I got a question.
Good.
So, do we have anybody here interested in a dump truck?
There's the, there's the mayor back there. So with, and that's one, one thing I want to ask Dale. We've got how many to be able to surplus?
Six.
Six. And we've got on the agenda to be able to sell, how many?
Six.
Six.
All six. Okay. Have, and I, and I know there's been some discussion with the city of Brandon. Have, what do we need to do to be able to work something out on that as far as surplus?
Are you talking about making a donation?
Well, I'm sure the city of Brandon would love a donation, but I have heard that, you know, they're willing to accept some responsibility in payment, and he's, and the mayor's shaking his head, so...
It's on here to date the surplus, and so all we have to do is add something to settle to the city of Brandon for X amount, whatever it takes.
Similar to how we're handling the motivator that we're settling to that account?
Yes.
Yeah, we can come up with a, okay.
Okay. So what do we need to, how do we need to?
You're, you're giving yourself the authority to sell it.
Okay.
So that's the process. It will comply with your requirements.
Okay.
Once it has, once it, there is an offer on the table to sell, that's accepted.
Okay. Okay. So we, we'll go ahead and approve the consent, and then it's open, then to move forward from there. Okay. All right. Well, then I had a motion, a second. Any more discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Is this your personal vehicle?
It's a truck.
It's a dump truck.
I know. The mayor's busy.
Well, you know, most time also, I watched you nod that head, you know, most time when you're selling something, you keep nodding. That sounds like bidding, so I mean, I saw three, about three or four good nods. So, all right. John Sullivan, tax assessment.
First item, petition to change the assessment, 2014, really in person dropped the assessment.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item B, authority to amend my prior, prior travel request. I want to stay for four days instead of two.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion?
He's overworked. He's stressed.
All in favor say aye. All opposed?
Item C, request to avoid the 2014 tax sale, pin number 28520, and respectively, request the tax collector to generate a new 2013 tax statement.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And item D, request to avoid the 2014 tax sale, pin number 23151, should have been coded tax exempt.
Most approved. Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, John?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridget Herring.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item. I'm requesting approval of a copier contract for the Tax Assessor's Office with Southern duplicating. This is replacing an existing contract that's about to expire.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item B, authority to amend my prior, prior travel request. I want to stay for four days instead of two.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion?
He's overworked. He's stressed.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item C, request to avoid the 2014 tax sale, pin number 28520, and respectively, request the tax collector to generate a new 2013 tax statement.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And item D, request to avoid the 2014 tax sale, pin number 23151, should have been coded tax exempt.
Most approved. Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, John?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bridget Herring.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I have one item. I'm requesting approval of a copier contract for the Tax Assessor's Office with Southern duplicating. This is replacing an existing contract that's about to expire.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
What about our, when are we going to approve the other, the kind, the six month?
July 6. I'm still working on bid tabs. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Charles Parker.
First item that I have on the agenda is a development called Magnolia Place. It's a development with private streets. I'm recommending approval of the final plat, and we have a lot of credit in the amount of $81,515. This is a development off of Farmington Boulevard, which is off of Old Fanning Road. I think it's going to be a very nice development. So anyway, I recommend approval of the final plat on that.
You say these are private roads?
Yes, sir. Private roads.
But they're built to...
They're built to county standards.
Built to county standards.
Yeah.
The good kind of private road.
Yes, it's, it's a good one. It's a good one. I think it's going to be a very nice development.
Where's it located?
Off of Farmington Boulevard, which is off of Old Fanning Road.
Okay. Who's the developer?
Landmark. Landmark Homes, I believe they go by.
That in District 2 or 5?
2.
2?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is our Ehrlich Road Extension, which is completed, and I'm recommending approval of the final pay request to Joe McGee Construction in the amount of $37,583.28, and requesting authority to issue the check. And just for the record, this is a decrease of $126,104, I mean, $101.54 from the original contract price.
Motion approved. Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop, I mean, Wilcox. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? I have one thing, this really wouldn't be for the discussion part, but I've had numerous calls, and I know we've talked about it, and I just want to get you checked on it. I was mentioning it to Tim this morning, but there's a site problem when it comes out on Williams Road. And I know some of that was, we're going to need to do something there. I, I checked it out again myself, and you do, you have to pull all the way up into Williams Road to see. And now that so much traffic using it, since Williams Road is closed for construction...
Sure.
The lower end of it, Northern End, it's, it's catching all the traffic. I'm really afraid we're going to wind up having a, an accident there, somebody shooting out in front of somebody. But I know Dale, maybe y'all have been working on it or somebody, but we need to, I want to follow up on that. Both sides, it's a site problem. Okay. All right.
Okay. Next item that I have on the agenda is Willa Grant 2, Phase 4 and Phase 5. I'm recommending approval of those construction plans. Willa Grant 2 is out in the Castle Woods Development.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Next item that I have on the agenda is I'm requesting approval of a utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct copper cable right along and across McKay Place, be installed between McKay Place and Highway 43 north.
Most approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. Next item I have on the agenda is requesting approval of a utility permit for AT&amp;T to construct copper telecommunication cable along and across Midway Road, installed between Midway Road and Riley Drive.
Most approved. Second.
Most approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you. The last item I have on the agenda is requesting approval of a utility permit for telepack network, DBAC Spire, to construct 860-foot dire bore along and across Lake Village Circle and Grants Ferry Road, installed between Spillway and Sheldon Door Road, Noah.
Motion approved.
Second.
Most approved, Mr. Keith. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. I've been trying to get ahold of them to come discuss, you know, they've done some high-data areas in, in the state, and I've tried to get them here to talk to them about maybe bringing up some of our neighborhoods to be able to do that. It'd be nice if we could get them in here before we approve this to give them, so we can get a plan, what their intentions are moving forward in the county.
My understanding of their program is that it's based on municipalities. I think they're doing it in the denser areas, obviously makes more sense for their business model, but in the, within densely populated areas, but their, their high-speed approach is to go into selective municipalities. It seems that it would make sense for the residential area, given its density.
And that's who's requested in the past, you know, certain neighborhoods over there.
Exactly.
How can we get them here? Because I've called a couple of times in, to Noville. If we, if we don't approve this, you think that might...
Yes, sir.
Sure.
That would probably get somebody's attention.
It would.
Yeah.
So who needs to make the call?
Here's the vote. Just say no.
What we could do is amend, we can amend Rodney's motion to approve this. If Rodney will agree to it, amend it.
Absolutely.
Saying that it's conditioned upon somebody from Spire, appearing before us at our next board meeting to give a discussion about their intentions with respect to high speed and the residential area.
That'd be great.
Okay. I amend my motion, my motion to what you just said.
I second that.
Okay.
Very good.
Motion. Motion to amend this motion by Mr. Keith, second by Mr. Wilcox. Any more discussion? Not all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Slay.
Good morning. We have, under item A, under my section, to set a public hearing for July 2 at 9:00 AM for the Glenn, any idea of her name? Yaw, Y-E-A-W, nuisance property, 711 Westerly Drive, District 4 property.
You want to set all three of them?
That would be good. Let's set items A, B, and C. That would be good. Let's set Items A, B, and C. They're July two, nine AM. Glenn Yaw nuisance, Teresa Holloway nuisance, and Philip Tate nuisance.
Make a motion that we approve the, uh, public hearing for July the second, nine AM.
Second.
Motion, Mr. Wilcox, set these public hearings. Uh, second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Item D is a public hearing on the Edward Bogan conditional use request, one-thirty-six Ely Walker Drive, District One property. Uh, Mr. Bogan is requesting a conditional use permit to place a twenty-fourteen sixteen-by-eighty manufactured home on an existing slab at one-thirty-six Ely Walker Drive in Florence. It's a forty-acre parcel of family land, zoned RE-one A. There are three other manufactured homes on the property and two houses. Property was posted. The notice of the hearing has been published in the paper and no calls have been received. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the Edward Bogan conditional use request. Anyone in opposition? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
All right, well, I make, uh, motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by myself. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, the next item is a public hearing on the Joe and Linda Andrews conditional use permit, one-twelve Old Camp Road, District Two parcel. Joe and Linda Andrews requesting conditional use permit to place a manufactured home at one-twelve Old Camp Road. Property is owned, uh, is owned by Joe's parents. It's a two-point-one-oh acre parcel, zoned RE-one. It'll be the second dwelling on the property. The property's posted and a notice of hearing was published. No calls have been received. This time, we'll open that public hearing. I'll ask if anyone's here to speak in opposition to the Joe and Linda Andrews conditional use request. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by Mr. Keith. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Any discussion? Not all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I don't think I said we would close that hearing, so I'll say that now. The next item is a public hearing on the Sheila Simmons conditional use request, one-seven-one Lone Pine Church Road, District Four parcel. Ms. Simmons is requesting a conditional use permit for an existing business. It's called Great American Publishers. It's been located on the second floor of her home since March of oh-six. She's requesting to expand the business by adding a three-thousand-square-foot metal building to be used as a warehouse for book storage and shipping. All of the business is conducted by phone and mail order. Public does not come to the office. Ms. Simmons is also requesting approval for a possible future expansion of the metal warehouse building on the north and east side, which was shown on the site plan that's already been reviewed. This is a five-point-one-six acre parcel, zoned A-two. Property's posted. Notice was published and no calls have been received. This time, we'll open a public hearing on the Sheila Simmons conditional use permit. I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Sheila Simmons conditional use permit? Mr. President, I don't see anyone. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Johnson. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? All, not all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, the next item is a public hearing on the John Thomas Varner III rezoning request at eighty-three Hebron Hill Drive, District Three. Mr. Varner is requesting to rezone one-point-four acres at eighty-three Hebron Hill Drive from RE-one to C-three. The property is located on the northeast corner of Highway eighteen and Hebron Hill Drive. There's an existing home on the property. If the zoning change is approved, uh, Mr. Varner will operate a vehicle sales business on the front of the property along Highway eighteen. He plans to build a twenty-by-thirty building for an office and install a privacy fence between the area of the building and the existing home. There are two existing driveways that provide access to the property. The house will use the driveway on Hebron Hill and the proposed business will have access off of Highway eighteen. The vehicle sales is permitted in, uh, C-three. The property's been posted and no, uh, notice of the hearing was published in the paper and no calls have been received. This time, we'll open the public hearing on the John Thomas Varner III rezoning request and I'll ask if there's anyone here to speak in opposition to the rezoning of this property. Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
Um, before I do, Dale, do we have any, or Buster, do we have any site, any kind of site problems or anything on Hebron Hill as far as having any, with a business like that?
Greg, let me say that what we're doing here is rezoning.
Right.
So the issues of site plan, site distances, accessing, and all that kinda stuff is for later day. That will come back around. So just trying to handle the zoning part first and I think it would be appropriate for the man to know whether or not he was gonna be able to operate the business begin with, roadway of the zoning, before you move into those next issues. I don't know if that helps.
Right.
Helps you understand sort of the process here, but that would be. But, I mean, it's appropriate to go ahead and ask these questions. I mean, at this point, I think Mr. Varner, he, he can hear that we've got some concerns about site distance and those kinds of things.
Yeah, I've been up there. I didn't see any, but I just wanted to make sure with our, uh, experts, so. Okay. I make a motion, we approve this rezoning.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, the next item, Item H, is a public hearing on the Castle Hill Pavilion conditional use permit, two-eighty-five Old Enix Road, District One parcel. Uh, Castle Hill Pavilion, I believe, is owned by Mr. Charles Anderson Jr. and it, he is requesting a conditional use permit for an eight-hundred-and-seventy-foot square, uh, square foot addition to enlarge a dressing room area of the Castle Hill Wedding and Events Pavilion. Property's located two-eighty-five Old Enix Road. This is a fifteen-acre parcel, zoned A-one. Property's posted. Notice was published and no calls have been received. This time, we'll open the public hearing to the Castle Hill Pavilion conditional use permit. I'll ask, is there anyone here to speak in opposition to the Castle Hill Pavilion conditional use permit? Anyone? Mr. President, I don't see anyone here to speak in opposition. We'll close that public hearing. It'd be appropriate to take action.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion approved by myself. Second, Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Only, only question I had that I, I had a couple of calls and you can answer them, um, um, you're adding on what part, where? I just told them you were adding on. Just adding on to the existing building, just going out?
Yeah, yeah, at the rear of the building, we're just adding. We have an existing, uh, dressing room for the men and the ladies.
Right.
And a kitchen area. We're just basically.
Yeah.
Uh, adding on to the rear end.
Yeah.
Taking the window out and then having the, the rear end.
I'm familiar with the way it lays out and that, that, I couldn't really tell them that's only, I had a couple of calls just at Ask and I just told them that you were adding on, so. Everybody just was curious what was going on. So, anyway. All right, a motion, second, to approve, um, discussion, uh, done. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Mr. President, Item A is a consideration of and potential action to approve the release of deed restrictions contained in a warranty deed from Rankin County to the City of Brandon dated July nine, nineteen ninety-three. The deed was covering twenty-nine-point-ninety-six acres, more or less, adjacent to the City of Brandon recreational facilities known as Shiloh Park and the deed restrictions limited use of the property in part to single-family residences. The City of Brandon is desiring to locate one of its new fire stations on this site and the deed restriction constitutes an obstacle to their plan. And so we've got the, uh, deed restrictions attached, uh, to the agenda, uh, or the release of the deed restrictions attached to the agenda. And so what is being, and this has been prepared by Mr. Mark Baker on behalf of the City of Brandon. I've reviewed the release and cancellation of the deed restrictions and that's what's before you now.
You find any errors? You find any errors?
Uh, if I did, I wouldn't say it. Not on, not on video. It appears to be professionally drafted and, uh, and it appears to me to be accurate. Um, the, the deed restrictions obviously create a problem as, inasmuch as you've got a quasi-governmental structure that's going into that place, that affects zoning and some other things as well. So it needs to be, uh, I, I believe that twenty-two years ago, the thinking of the board was that it could end up being a use that could be problematic for the residents in that area uh, with the development that has gone on with Shiloh Park, uh, with the City of Brandon's growth, with the need for emergency services that Brandon clearly has recognized and is taking care of. I think this would be an appropriate action to take.
I'll make a motion that we approve the release of the deed restrictions to the City of Brandon.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Um, Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Mr. President, Item J, we've taken care of already. Item K is a discussion of and potential action to approve the MOU between the City of Florence Police Department and the Rankin County Sheriff's Office for Mutual Aid Response. This time, I'm gonna ask if here, if he doesn't mind, uh, to give you guys some, uh, the benefit of some of that discussion. The MOU is attached, uh, under Item Nine K.
There's really, I mean, it's just as simple that, that they just need something right saying that we'll help them out like we always have. I mean, you know, we're the sheriff's office that responds to any municipality or any, any type of fail. So I think they just want something on paper, so there's no cause, you know, there's no really obligation anymore than what we're already doing.
Have they never had one? I mean, officially?
I don't know if they're applying for some kinda grant or something like that.
Huh.
There must be some reason that they need something right.
Right.
It's the first time I've seen anything like this in any sort of official capacity.
Yes.
Like this where it's just general sheriff-related response services. And we have MOUs.
I was fixing to say, we already have MOUs with all the other municipalities, right? I mean, pretty much.
No, they have MOUs like this.
Not, not for general response-related. We, we have MOUs for things such as, I'll just give you an example, uh, uh, mutual aid response with the, uh, Jackson Municipal Airport Authority.
Right.
That's a good example of where you have a, you have a formal, uh, mutual aid response document that's in place and it's signed among many different governmental entities. Uh, another example. Yeah, Countywide SWAT would be an example, uh, enforcement on the interstate uh, where you've got, uh, patrolling going on out there. Uh, you've got MOUs in place between different entities, uh, that deal with things like that. This is the first time I've seen one where it's just general sheriff's response-related. I, I don't know what it is. David Ringer put this document together on behalf of the City of Florence and we don't see any reason not to do it because it's what we're already doing.
Right. So you feel good about it, Sheriff?
Yeah.
Okay. Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Keith. Any discussion? Not all favors say aye.
Aye.
Mr. Laura Oster.
First item I have this morning is the approval to sell a John Deere six-seventy G motor grader to Benton County as an intergovernmental transaction in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand pursuant to Mississippi Code thirty-one, seven thirteen. It's our asset number eight-three-three-six and this equipment has been prior approved for, uh, removal from inventory and declared surplus on April the sixth.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion approved, Mr. Wilcox. Second, Mr. Bishop. Any discussion? I'd just like to ask, um, where do, how do you come up with the price? Like when you're selling it, Dale, like this hundred and twenty-six thousand?
It's, uh, we get, most of it, we get it from Baylor, I'll do competition, then on route with what they think it is.
All right. No discussion, all favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
And this would be similar to what we'd need to put on the minutes to.
That's, that's what I was, yeah.
With Brandon. Uh, the next item I have is authority for the Board President to execute Global Telink Corporation Service Agreement on behalf of Rankin County Sheriff's Department for the inmate phone service as prior approved on April the fifteenth.
Motion approved.
Motion approved, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Wilcox. Uh, there must be some discussion.
Hey, Sheriff. Uh, you've already looked all through the Global Telink Corporation, everything like that and?
I don't know if y'all remember, that's when we came back.
Right.
We got, and all that went down, department correction.
Yes, sir.
We do the whole thing.
Yes, sir.
So it, I had like six or seven, um, people, um, more or less bid or submit a quote that we're doing the services.
Right.
Richard Lawrence reviewed every contract and, uh, to his guidance, I think the one I thought had the best money for the both of the counties.
Gotcha.
We already voted on this, haven't we?
We voted on it, but we didn't have all the contract particulars in hand, so now we need to execute the documents.
Right. Okay.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any additional business to be discussed?
Couple of things. Uh, one, I don't know if y'all remember, Bill Roberts was supposed to be here today. He was gonna talk about radios. We get a for sure count. I mean, we needed. Brett's here.
Brett.
He knows how many we need on the county side. But Brett, uh, Bill's mother's having surgery today, so he wasn't able to attend and he'll be here at our first meeting in July, our work session.
Work session?
Yeah.
The second, I think it is, yes.
Right.
I think Brett's got the numbers.
Brett, have you got, you wanna give us just a rough, pretty close, rough estimate? I mean, I know it's been kind of a moving parts.
Uh, total for the, the county fire departments is three-hundred-and-thirty radios. Uh, we just bought a hundred and three, so the new total is two-hundred-and-twenty-seven we need to buy.
Two-hundred-and-twenty-seven total?
Two-hundred-and-twenty-seven radios, yes, sir.
That's handheld?
Yes, sir.
And how much do they cost?
Uh.
Depends on which one you buy.
Yeah.
Well, what did we buy?
We just bought a hundred and three.
Ones we bought were fifteen thousand piece. Or fifteen-hundred, fifteen, fifteen hundred.
I said, for really? I'm glad you corrected that. Cause Chuck's pencil just went crazy over there.
But that actually made it fifteen-hundred, sound pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Not a bad dip.
Yeah. Uh, that's the way, that's the way you threw it out there. Thanks.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Brett.
Okay.
But, uh, the second, we'll for sure, you know, we'll know how many of the sheriff's radios we're going, can program.
Transfer.
And that very well cut down the number we have to buy for the fire department.
We hope so.
Instead of the two-twenty-seven, correct?
Yeah.
So.
Instead of the two-twenty-seven, after we get with the sheriff to see what can be reprogrammed, it could come down possibly?
About seventy radios.
Down seventy? Okay.
Weren't we thinking we would be able to pick up some from other municipalities, even outside of Rankin County?
And Bill's supposed to have that number too.
Yeah, I think he was working in conjunction with that.
We asked them to cooperate with us, you know, since we were paying, put all the equipment in, in all their radio systems.
Mm-hmm. Asked, right. We'll wait and see.
Come the second, we'll have a better idea of what we're looking for.
Right.
Out of pocket. And, uh, we do have an executive session today.
Yes. Okay. All right, do I have a most need to go into executive session?
I make most discuss the need to go into executive session.
Second.
Most, Mr. Bishop. Second, Mr. Wilcox. All favors say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, thank you.
Morning, Mr. Baker.
Thank y'all.
You were heading back there.
Good job, Mark.
I didn't see you. I didn't see you back there, Mark.
Hey, good day.
You're not going to tell us, are you? For tell us. You're headed?
Yeah. Yeah. Yes, sir. Yeah. I'm just trying to tell you. It's about that. We're talking, we're talking.
It's serious. I'm just trying about.
We, uh, did really try to.
Very good on you.
So we'll be.
He only went about this long, driveway.
Oh, yeah, well, he was like, what? Say what?
You got it. And he's just got a little bit, a little more asshole, gotta.
Pull that on the driveway, sit for my sake.
A little credit. Good job today, sir. I wanted to mention that so we didn't pass you up.
When you get that thing, I need a little crap.
I just get tired of hearing them, them young kids out there going, my car, your head's on the driveway. Go to your house.
Right, how are you? It's good to see you. I don't really. I'm gonna need you to make sure.
You gonna be there?
Take a bow. Exactly. And I think. Well, you know, we. Looking at it. Yeah, it's kinda like getting where like. It's like. He thinks it's a boat and is able to do it, so I was like. But still, that costs money, you know? But no, don't worry, I done broken news to him, so. Uh, I was like, you mean, bridge ain't talking? Yeah, thanks.
Are we doing it for a hundred and twenty-six inch? I knew that.
We had a meeting with him a couple of months ago.
There you go. Make sure to.
He said, I found a water that left.
They didn't stop at the bridge.
It was past time, it was past weekend. Okay. I didn't play. Yeah, that, that's gonna happen.
Or it stops. Well, I just need, know what I can tell them when it starts calling. I was like, well, yeah, I know, it's like, it's sort of paving joint stop on the bridge. Okay. Yeah. Yeah. Thanks, man.
But yeah, but if you go by the technical details of the subways, it's gonna have to be current.
Not, we've got three, five, fifteen.
Doug Cutter and Butler? I think it is.
Subregs say if it's private, it means kind of special.
Yep.
I want to discuss our, that whole deal about how to stop this.
Yes.
People so divided.
I'm thinking at this point, we need to play it at the feet of those who are being difficult.
That's the only problem.
I have stood back, that sales guy, Miller, Halloween, so he says, he's been in nine-one-one addressing. He said, they called down there, they got an address, you know, from nine-one-one, they gave them an address.
Guess what the address they gave?
Brandywine?
No.
I thought it was Brandywine, he said.
East Pete Cross, or they gave the Page place, one of those two, both of which look like they're public, or our system.
Yeah, East Pete Cross, well, it does look like it, but it's not.
Well, yeah, it looks like, that's the point.
Well, he said Brandywine, though, so.
They didn't give them Brandywine.
Hello, Walter Smart Chase.
I'm ready. Stops.
I'm just saying, it's what he sold them, so.
Well, alright, we'll talk about it.
Yeah.
Okay.
Push me out of work now. Aye, I will next time. Hey, Bill, y'all needing to do something? Bob, y'all needing to do something? Oh, okay, alright. No, I, I didn't know. So what are we going to executive session for?
Yeah, what's this?
Litigation.
Focal litigation.
And personnel? Okay.
Yeah.
Alright. I make a motion going to executive session to discuss litigation and personnel.
Second.
Okay, motion.
Second.
Motion goes to executive session by need for Mr. Bishop, second, Mr. Wilcox, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?